All right, we're going to open right into the tax budget and federal grant hearing.
Okay, um, the tax budget's pretty much as it's been the last couple of years. Um, this is the last year of the ARP ESER money. Um, so federal grants, the special revenue fund is still up higher than it's usually, um, just because of those ESER fundings. The debt fund, um, we are having that meeting that we talked about at the last board meeting for a finance committee meeting to talk about how we're going to repay the notes, um, hopefully this year, and then that might alter this budget. Because I built it in that the notes wouldn't be paid off during this bu- this year, so. Just not knowing what we're going to do. So, that, that's why debt is still up in the three million dollars instead of down to under a million dollars. So, um, other than that, everything else is in line. Um, we start the fiscal year, we're thinking in June with eleven million four hundred thousand. We'll bring in estimated income of a little over twenty, which would give us thirty-five million one hundred eighty-seven thousand. Expenditures for next year would be twenty-five million nine sixty-seven five hundred, which would give us an ending balance of nine million two nineteen five hundred. Anybody have any questions? And again, this periodically will be adjusted during next year. Um, it'd be adjusted with the estimated income July first, and then we'll go from there.
Any questions? All right.
Okay.
With that.
Tax budget is, hearing's over, and we can move into the.
All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Last time I do that. Call the roll.
Ms. Ameca.
Here.
Ms. Shum.
Here.
Ms. Gadsden.
Here.
Mr. Stanley.
Here.
Ms. Stagel.
Here.
All right, we'll take a motion for the adoption of the agenda of the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes we need to make?
No.
Call the roll.
Ms. Ameca.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes. This time, we'll entertain nominations for the election of the board president.
I happily nominate Farah Ameca.
Second.
Third.
Are there any other nominations? Do I need to, can I close and take the roll? Right?
Ms. Ameca.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Ms. Stanley.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Uh, at this time, we'll entertain nominations for the, uh, election of the board vice president.
I nominate Joanne Stagel.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, uh, moved to close the nominations and accept. Is that nomination? Call the roll.
Ms. Ameca.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, do we need a motion for those, or can?
Motion for what?
Motion for the nominations, so we did the, okay.
Yeah. No, we can all do it. The nominations don't have to be improved unless they're more than one.
We should update that, though. Okay. Good to know. Okay. Yep. All right. Conduct the swearing-in ceremonies. Do you have the?
Ms. Ameca, would you like to swear yourself in?
I do. I, Farah Ameca, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and will perform faithfully the duties of the President of the Board of Education of the Oberlin City School District, Lorain County, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Ms. Stagel, would you like to swear yourself in?
I, Joanne Stagel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and will perform faithfully the duties of the Vice President of the Board of Education of the Oberlin City School District, Lorain County, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, we're physically, okay. We're going to please use the chairs now?
Switching chairs. I think you're still my neighbor.
Oh, I took the wrong one.
You look like you need a hand.
Yeah.
Because you've got a lot of things going on.
Did you need your agenda?
She doesn't need it anymore. She figures you'll take care of it now.
Sorry, I was holding up your photos.
So, I guess we'll just keep moving right on along. Um, continuing on with the agenda, I will entertain a motion, motion for the establishment of meeting dates and times. Meetings to be held at the Oberlin Elementary School at six P.M., unless otherwise noted, and for appointment of board representatives to the listed boards, committees, and subcommittees and organizations for 2023.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Um, any discussion on the dates and everything?
So, we should just clarify the, the dates that have been changed?
So which dates have been cha-changed from prior years? Is that what you're saying? Or from the fourth?
Well, from the, the standard fourth Tuesday.
Gotcha.
So, like, in February, it's a month early. Is there a reason for that?
A month early?
I mean, sorry, it's a week early.
Okay.
Is that one on purpose?
Probably because it's a short Thursday. I mean, a short month.
Is there a reason?
Yes, I'm not sure.
Well, the twenty-eighth is the, the fourth Thursday.
I'm not sure why she. No, I'm not.
So, can we correct that one to the twenty-eighth?
Yes, we can do that, twenty-eighth.
We can change that to the twenty-eighth? March fourteenth?
Do we have?
Is that?
March fourteenth is because of spring break, but that's still only, the fourth would be the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, spring break isn't during that time.
Yeah, spring break is the twenty-first. No, the twenty-eighth, the twenty-first would be during spring break.
Yes.
Oh, that's why she, right, she moved it up instead of back.
Well, the, the standard should have been the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Last year, it was the, last year, there was five weeks, that's why.
Right.
Oh, okay. So, April sixteenth. Hopefully, everybody has their calendars out, too, making sure these days work okay for them.
So, so what, what are we doing in February?
In February, we're moving it to the twenty-eighth, and March, we're moving it to the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
So, in neither month, an anomaly.
Yes.
And March the seventh is a work session?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
I will be late for the one that's on the twenty-eighth.
Of March?
Yep. March. The fourteenth, we're leaving alone, right?
No, we're moving, no, that's when we just said the, March fourteenth?
Yeah.
That's when we moved to the twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Yep.
I knew there was, like, all the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's the, well, February and March always have this, unless it's a, they're always the same.
Uh, and then, in August, there's a work session on the eighth, and then the meeting is on the twenty-second. That's the fourth, okay.
Yep.
And then September, so twenty-sixth, oops. One, two, three, that looks good.
I'd like to talk about if we can move the November fourteenth work session. That'll be the day we, um, that the OSBA conference ends the same way it was this year.
I have November seventh.
Yeah, we have it November seventh.
Seventh, the work session.
Yeah. Somebody moved, I printed the one that was in my email, and apparently someone changed it over.
I'm sorry.
So, it's already mine.
Yep.
Yeah, we noticed that and changed it.
Good job.
Oh, that's November, not October. There we go.
So that is Election Day.
Yes.
Election Day, yeah.
Just so we all know.
Yeah. Twenty-eighth and then the twelfth. And that's for, because of the holiday.
Christmas break, yes.
Yeah. Those all look good to me. Any other comments on the dates for our meetings?
And do we, we typically have three work sessions each year?
Typical is a hard word.
As relatives.
So we typically have a retreat in August. And then we have probably two sessions. I mean, the, the good thing about work sessions is that we can just have conversation. It doesn't have to be the formality of the motions and, well, we can, we can hear, the, the, the audience can participate. It's, it's much more laid back. And so if there are things that the board wants to know about, that's a really good way to do it.
And I feel like in the past, we've had excellent community participation in those work sessions.
And, I mean, part of it's coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
So, there haven't been a lot of people.
Right.
Echo, 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 so, you know, it's hard to say.
So, then is that, eh, August work session, that's, like, considered the retreat?
That's what it has been. We also one year moved it, like, the retreat, to, like, November, so. So, I mean, it's, it's our stuff. We can do what we want with it.
Yes, we guys can do. When I started, ten years ago, we had, oh, at least six.
Oh, whoa.
Yeah.
And that was, seemed to be considered normal at the time.
Yep. Can we get a list of what the special topics that have been discussed in the past? I guess I'm just curious what it is that we're maybe missing out on by having less.
Part of, part of what has changed is the strategic plan. Like, by having the strategic plan, we were able to take topics off of the board's plate to talk about and give them to subgroups to actually think through. When we hit the facility, when we got the, this project underway, that kind of threw everything, it was boggle, like, the whole, the whole world changed, and then we had a pandemic in the middle of it. And so, um, we had topics like transportation and, uh, diving into the numbers. Um, I, we did one, like, I know PBIS was somehow a, a topic.
Social, emotional.
Yeah. But it was before we had the language of social, emotional.
Yes, yes.
I mean, so, it's, it's, it's really, like, things, we did an IB, like, deep dive into IB, and, like, evaluating whether or not it was worth it, what it, what it does to the district, what it provides. Now, there, there've been a variety of different ones over the years. That, before the building project, there were a lot that were kind of related to topics that were part of it.
Yeah, and the, the answer is if there's something that you want to know about.
Are the community members are asking you about them?
Yeah.
That's, that's a good way to say, well, then, we can have a special meeting for that, so that you can come air and stay out of the structure and only giving them three minutes to talk, and.
Right. Right.
Okay, great. Well, so we keep that in mind as we move forward, because we get to, uh, decide the topics prior to the meeting. So, we have some, some leeway there.
And, you know, frankly, the other thing is that we've gotten our meetings fairly short a lot, so if there's a petition, particular issue, there's no reason why you can't put it on a regular. You know? Say you want to have a half-hour discussion about discipline, about, you know, whatever. You can just, you know, you guys who, and, you know.
Uh-huh, and, and to Ken's point, that is kind of what happened under, with Jason as president. I mean, he, he, his perspective was, we don't need to have all these extra meetings talking about things. Let's bring it into the meeting and talk about it there, rather than adding another meeting onto our laden calendars, so.
Gotcha. That's all good stuff. Thank you. Anything else on the meeting dates and times?
Nope.
Okay. So, uh, on to the appointment of representatives for the boards that are listed. So the board committees that we have, first one is O- Ohio School Board Association Legislative Liaison. And Ann was the representative, board representative last year. Are you interested in continuing with that?
I'm happy to continue. I'll tell you what, I largely rely on the two experts down at the end of the table. I mean, you know, I, I reached out to Gail Manning about something, you know, there, there've been a few things that I've done. And, and, you know, when we get letters like the one we did today about the terrifying work that the State of Ohio is undertaking for the Board of Education, you know? And so, like, those kinds of things, I, I pay special attention to because I'm on this, but. So I'm happy to continue, but if somebody else is, like, dying to do it, I'd be happy to acquiesce.
Anyone interested in jumping on to that committee? Hearing none.
All righty then.
Put your name back in there.
Thanks, Bob and David.
The next one is the Oberlin Schools Endowment Fund Board of Trustees Representative, and right now, we have Rosa Gadsden. Are you interested in remaining on that committee, Rosa?
Sure, I kind of think I sucked at it, but, I mean, I, I was able to get some information. But what I don't get, I don't get, so. I mean, I'd be like, okay, so, and Bob's like, yeah, and we did this, and this, and this, and I'm like.
It's a really good experience. If you haven't done it before, it's a really good group.
It's, it's kind of interesting. I mean, some of the, when we go in to look at all that, now everything's done, like, online. We used to have, before the calamity, have meetings about what was what, and we'd go through it. But now, they just, like, send it all out, and I'm reading, and I'm like, okay, this, 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 okay, yeah, that's good.
But it's really interesting to see the creativity that's coming in for ideas for things outside of the curriculum. And, you know, that, these requests come in, like, the, it's not just the teachers and administrators, it's also the students. I mean, it's, it's pretty cool to see what happens.
Well, is there any interest in anyone else jumping onto this committee?
I'd be happy to, I haven't been on that one. I'd be happy to be on that one. I don't know if Rosa would be interested in either of the other ones I'm currently on.
So we'll swap.
Sure, we'll switch.
Okay. So, you want to decide, well, let's go through the rest of the list, and you can say which one you want to replace Joanne on. But we'll put Joanne into the Endowment Rep position. Okay, and then the Policy Committee, um, that's.
Uh, there's also the Technology.
Oh, sorry, Technology Applications and Education Committee Rep. And that's Ken right now, Dr. Stanley, um, anyone, are you still interested in staying on that one?
I'm happy to stay on it. I'm happy with both mine, but I'm also happy to.
Okay, we could have somebody else, okay. Anyone particularly interested in the Tech Applications Committee?
As long as Steve's on it. I think the district is well represented.
I like the theme here. Okay, so we'll keep Dr. Stanley on there, and then, okay, now the Policy Committee Representatives, that's me and Joanne. Um, speaking for myself, I'm happy to stay on there. However, I tend to miss the meetings because they are in the middle of the day, and I am usually in court. So it's very, some days, they land on a day that I'm not in court, and then I'll attend, but I feel like I'm missing them. I like being on them because that's how my brain works. I read stuff like that every day. But I just don't, I'm a little concerned about missing too many meetings.
Do they have to be in the middle of the day?
Yeah, what times are those meetings?
Our Neola rep comes in, so he works during the day.
Yeah, and my schedule is flexible, so I've been able to make it to those, so.
Okay, what time is that usually, though?
Uh, they usually start either ten or eleven.
Oh, God, uh.
Yeah.
Maybe that's just not the.
Maybe that's not the one for you.
I mean, because depending on the day, I, yeah, if it's a distro day, I'm not even going to be able to act like I'm playing on the phone, like, I'm listening to it. It's, yeah. That's going to be a problem.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to stay on because, you know, I can understand the policies, and I like getting the information, and can ask questions, but if I'm not there.
So how about this, what, what if you stay on the committee, but then, if you can't, if, if it's scheduled for a time that you can't, then reach out to one of the three of us.
Yeah, and, and we could talk before I go to the meeting.
Okay.
So we're on the same, yeah.
We just can't have more than two board members there.
Right, at the same time.
So.
Okay. Do you, well, let me ask, um, Dr. Hall and Bob, do you feel like you need to have the two reps there every time? Like, has it been a problem when it's just one?
It's okay if it's one. We can also do a Zoom link, too, at the same time. So if you're available during Zoom link, you can, if you don't have court, so you have to rush over here and then right back, we can do a Zoom as well, so you can zoom in.
Okay, so, all right, I'll stay on, and then I'll just remember to touch base with, with Joanne if I have a conflict, and then also let you know if I need a Zoom link. I probably should be able to come if I'm available, though. Okay. So, Joanne and I are staying on that one. The next one is the Finance Audit Committee Representatives, and we have Ken Stanley and Joanne Stagel. And I don't think anybody would want Ken to come off.
The question is, how do we get Ken to then be a community representative after he comes off the board?
Yeah, you never get to leave that, Ken.
That's how, that, so we've already planted that seed, Ken. And Joanne, do you feel comfortable staying on the, the committee? Are you interested in switching this one?
Um, I would either stay or switch this one. I've had several meetings with Bob to try to wrap my head around finance. It is not my wheelhouse. But I feel much more comfortable now than I did when I first started, so. Um, and that meeting is at, like, seven in the morning on Zoom, like, once a quarter. So it's, you know, it's easy for me to attend.
Okay. Well, unless anybody else is interested, I'd say stick with it, since you've put in the time and, you know, kind of prepped yourself to be.
Working on it.
That's very good. We appreciate it. Okay, so we'll keep Ken and Joanne on that one.
Unless Rosa wants to jump on finance.
Swap that one?
No.
Can I just say I need to learn from this woman?
Why?
Art of saying no.
I mean, there's, I mean, it's, it's really simple. You know what you're all capable of.
That's absolutely where your strengths are.
Are you be capable?
I, I, am I capable? Yes. Am I going to be focused enough to put in the effort? At seven o'clock in the morning? Absolutely not. Um, yeah.
All right, well, moving on to the Town and Gown Representatives, we have me and Rosa. As the reps there, I would gladly stay on that committee.
And I will actually stay on that, because I feel like now I need to be on something. And I, I, I just need to know when the meetings are, because I've never got information about that.
Really?
Oh.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we get that to you.
Yeah, there's a, so, we have meetings scheduled out a little ways, so you could put them on your calendar now.
If I don't, yeah, I.
We didn't before.
Huh?
We do now, but we.
Yeah, because before it was like, oh, there was a meeting?
Okay, so that one's, uh, wrapped up. And then we have the Lorain County JVS Representative, which has to remain and Shum for the last year. Is that correct?
I think it's last five year, next five years.
The typo.
Yes.
We're already planting those seeds. You guys think you're going somewhere, not that far.
Well, she won't be here probably to object to us putting her.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's pretty sneaky. Okay, I'm going to put something on my calendar, second Tuesday in January.
All right, it'll just be added.
They do say if you don't show up to a meeting, you can't.
You get assigned things, so that's the worst.
It is true.
Okay, well, thank you. We got all of our board committees. Now let's move to our Strategic Planning Subcommittee. And we have the Communication Committee, Ann and Rosa are on that committee. Are you both interested in remaining?
I'm definitely interested in remaining, sure.
Okay, so that one was easy. Did anybody want to make a play, I mean, or, uh, put interest in that one, or I didn't want to close that off?
I'm happy with my committee.
Okay. Well, so the thing is, the next committee, so we haven't, I think we swapped you out, Joanne, for the Schools Endowment Fund, um, and we haven't put Rosa on anything in your place.
Oh, Rosa can have that one back if she wants.
The which one?
The Endowment.
I'm sorry, I thought we were in strategic planning.
Yeah, we're in strategic.
Well, we were, what I'm saying is that when we swapped, uh, Joanne out for you, Rosa, we indicated that you were going to take her place somewhere else, and there's nowhere else but this.
This is true. What would you rather do, Endowment or Education?
Hold, hold on.
Sure.
Those are separate things. You've got board committees, and you've got Strategic Planning Subcommittee. I think it's important that all board members have representation on the strategic plan.
Oh.
So.
Oh, so she wouldn't be on.
So I, I mean, Rosa has stayed with Town and Gown, so she is serving on a committee. So, I'm, I'm less concerned about that than, I, I would encourage, unless Joanne doesn't want to be on.
No, I really, I've been on Educational Planning for, I think, since the very beginning, yeah. So.
As a community participant.
So do you, so then the question is, do you, separate from that? Because now you're on, like, a bunch of stuff, do you still want Endowment? I don't care either way.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't mind either way. If we want to split it up, two for everybody, then Rosa can have Endowment back.
But if you, uh, again.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't mind.
If you want to do Endowment and see the stuff that they do.
Yeah, I guess I, I kind of like to do it.
Well, they do it.
Well, can we, okay, well, how much does it matter how many?
It doesn't.
Okay, it doesn't, board committees, their role that has, okay. So we don't have to worry about the replacement. Okay, we'll let it go.
And there's also no rule that we can't have.
Two.
Two people there, too.
Yeah.
Oh, for Endowment?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Right?
That's not true.
Can we do that?
No, because those are board seats. So, because they have board members.
Yeah, that's true. Only one of you would have a vote.
They'd be like.
They both could attend, only one would have a vote.
That's good to know.
Same thing with JVS. Those are actual.
Oh, okay.
It's a separate board.
So those are separate.
And they have bylaws.
So we have two on some of the other committees because those aren't boards.
Right, because, because we're, we're walking the line between, you cannot be in a meeting representing the board, voicing opinions as a member of the board, if there are more than two of you there.
Ah, okay.
So, that's, that's, and, and then, so, so on the committees, you can't have more than two board members in a Policy Committee meeting or in a Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
Um, but on boards, so the Endowment Board and the JVS Board, those are spaces that have been allotted to the Board of Education to assign a member to serve. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't have somebody else attend as a guest, but.
But it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as is. And, yeah, because we're not, I'm not hearing any other comments about it. Okay, so then, so the Educational Programming Committee will remain, Joanne. And then we move on to the Facilities and Finance Committee. And I'll say it again, but you're like the finance guru, so. Would you mind staying on there? It's like Ken Stanley, Ken Stanley, Ken Stanley.
It's not an additional meeting, so.
Oh, that's good. So are you okay with that? Stay with Ken? Okay, thanks. And then the last one, Student and Family Support Committee, that's my passion, so I'm happy to stay on that one. If anybody else wanted to, we could add a person to that one, right?
We could.
Anybody else interested? Okay, not hearing anything. We have all of our assignments, so. Any other questions, discussion about any of these two sections? Meetings and board representation on these committees and boards? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve Board Items A through I. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Wait, oh, who's going to do? Does somebody?
The twenty-third is, um, Item A is approval of the twenty-three to twenty-four tax budget. Item B is approval to authorize treasurer request advance of property taxes. Item C is approval to authorize treasurer to invest in active funds. Item D is resolu- resolution and dispense with the reading of the ministering board minutes, board meetings, sorry. Item E is deployment of following legal counsel as needed. Item F is approval of the twenty-twenty-three OSBA annual membership. Item G is approval of the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. Item H is approval of the petty cash accounts in twenty-twenty-three. Item I is approve, approval to appoint Mr. Reinhardt, treasurer's designated for the purpose of public records training as required by ORC one four nine point four three.
Okay, and I had a question, can we just have, uh, we've probably talked about this before, but just a little idea around what the petty cash is for, for cafeteria, Board of Education, and athletics?
Sure, the cafeteria is for the pop machines that are in all the buildings, so we fund those, um, so that people can change out of them. The, um, office, the money in the treasurer's office is used for purchases under twenty dollars, bus drivers borrow money, take money out of it to pay tolls if they have to take a toll, um, if a administrator needs something, they'll run to Walmart, bring the receipt in, and we'll replenish their cash. And then athletics is for the tickets.
To make change for the ticket?
Yeah.
For change?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Change for the tickets, yeah.
Yes.
So for the, for the buses, is there a reason why we can't use EZ passes?
I was thinking that.
We could buy EZ passes, but we really don't do...
We've had one this year. So it's really, since we switched conferences...
But isn't the rate cheaper per mile?
Yeah, but...
It's cheaper per toll.
But then we'd have to buy five of them, or the bus driver would forget it, so I, I've just never, if we were still in our other conferences, it would be worthwhile, but we've had one...
But you can buy, if, and if you don't use them frequently, you can have one transponder with multiple licenses on it, and you just put the transponder on the bus.
Yeah.
I can look into it, I can ask Jim to look into it, it's just, we haven't really had any, so I haven't, it hasn't been an issue since I've been here.
Right. And now in the spring, the kids will start like going on field trips to Cleveland and stuff again, won't they?
But they're not, usually jumping on eighty.
True, they don't necessarily have to jump on the tight.
And they do it for parking and stuff, too, like when they do do that, and they have to pay for parking down there.
Okay.
That, that's what the cash is for.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I think the tolls are half off.
But yeah, we could look into it, but I really don't see that we pay the tolls that often.
Tolls for that is like, when you do the EZ pass, it's thirty-three percent off of what the normal toll is.